Good evening. I would like to call the July 9, 2018, Belbrook City Council meeting to order would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. McGill?
Here.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Here.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schweller?
Here.
Mayor Baird?
Here.
Formal approval of the City Council's regular meeting minutes of June 25, 2018. Does any member on council have any corrections or additions to the regular City Council meeting minutes of our last meeting?
No, Mayor.
Seeing none, the minutes are approved as written. Prior to this meeting this evening, we did have an executive session to talk about purchase or sale of property, so we had that eat earlier, open the meeting, and then close that meeting, and now we're back into our regular City Council meeting. Mayor's announcements, a special guest, we have none. We do have two public hearings of ordinances this evening, ordinance number 2018-3. Mr. Schweller.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance 2018-3, an ordinance authorizing city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2019 to the Green County Auditor. Whereas the city is required to prepare and submit the tax budget for 2019 to Green County Auditor no later than July 20, 2018, following a public hearing, now therefore the city developer hereby ordains. Section 1, that the tax budget for fiscal year 2019 as attached hereto be approved for submission to Green County Auditor to guarantee the city's eligibility for the allocation of local government funds in 2019, and section 2, the surging shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period provided by law. This is again an annual requirement we do every year. This guarantees our allocation of local government funds and also our certification of our property tax levies. What follows on the ordinances, eight pages of details with the general fund, the police levy fund, the police pension fund, the fire levy fund, and finally some other capital expenditures, so avoid reading all the details, but again, this is something we do every year in advance of July 20 and very consistent with prior years. Anything, Dan?
No, this did include the revenues from the fire levy that did pass in May, so it is current figures.
Okay, good.
Counsel, this is a public hearing. We had an introduction of this ordinance at our last meeting. Does counsel have any questions? I will present it to the audience. We do this on a regular annual basis. This is a public hearing, and you can come up and ask questions, and you can have five minutes. I don't see anyone jumping up, so I will call this public hearing closed. May I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-3?
Mayor, so moved?
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt ordinance number 2018-3, an ordinance authorizing the city manager/finance director to submit the tax budget for fiscal year 2019 to the Green County Auditor, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
We have one more public hearing of ordinances, ordinance number 2018-4. Mr. Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 2018-4, an ordinance amending Part 4, traffic code of the Belbrook Municipal Code, whereas the city of Belbrook periodically reviews its policies and procedures, and whereas the city has determined that sections of the traffic code are duplicated from sections of the Ohio Revised Code, and whereas the city will use the Ohio Revised Code section when appropriate, and whereas the city desires to eliminate the sections of the traffic code that are duplicates of the Ohio Revised Code. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby ordains: Section 1, that the following sections of Chapter 474, bicycles, mopeds, motorcycles generally of the Belbrook Municipal Code be deleted in their entirety. Code 47.07, safe riding regulations for bicycles, 474.08, parking locks, 474.09, parents' responsibility, 474.10, suspension of riding privileges and pounding of bicycles, 474.12, safe riding regulations for mopeds. Section 2, this ordinance will take effect August 2, 2018. Just an ordinance to get rid of our duplication of ordinances.
Would you like to add anything to that?
Nope, this was just further cleanup.
Any questions on counsel? This is, we've been doing this for how many years, Mike? Probably seven?
It's probably in excess of, well, probably at least five years plus, but it's been a good activity to clean up the ordinance.
Clean them up.
Sections that are no longer meaningful and duplicate of the Ohio Revised Code.
And it's much better to prosecute our Ohio Revised Code than our own ordinances. This is a public hearing. Any questions on counsel?
None.
Once again, this is open to the audience. Do we have anyone who has any questions regarding ordinance number 2018-4? Seeing none, I call this public hearing closed. I have a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-4.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2018-4.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
Is that Mr. Edwards that seconded, or McGill?
I don't know. Was it Darryl, I think?
Darryl, okay. Motion by Mr. Greenwood to adopt ordinance number 2018-4, an ordinance amending Part 4, traffic code of the Belbrook Municipal Code, seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Introduction of ordinances, we have none. Resolutions, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 tonight, but we have one very important resolution, and I believe this is the first time I've ever have ever read a resolution as mayor in the last six and a half years, but it's a very special reason why. But before I do that, as it is on the agenda, Dale Wilson is retiring. He has talked about it for a while, and after over 41 years, we would like to acknowledge his service to the community. Just to show you how important he was to the city, our past city manager made a point and wants me to read a letter, which I'll be happy to do regarding Mr. Wilson's career and some of the things he's done for the city. Dear Mayor Baird and council members, in less than one week, the city of Belbrook will be losing one of the most important assets. Dale Wilson will be retiring after a long and distinguished career with the city. I had the privilege and honor to work with Dale for nearly 10 years. I've never met a more dedicated employee. Dale is conscientious, hardworking, thorough, fair, honest, ethical, and knowledgeable. During my tenure with the city, I could always count on Dale to provide insight and information about the issues at hand. Although public safety employees receive a lot of attention for their work, the service department of any city is what keeps the city running. As the leader of this department, Dale has impacted every resident in the city. He has been involved in countless projects relating to the water system, stormwater maintenance, and street improvements. Dale is not someone that wants to be in the limelight, so he's going to love tonight. And in fact, he's listening to this right now. He's actually here, Mark. He's probably cringing. However, Dale has done more for the city of Belbrook in his tenure than most people will ever know and deserves this recognition. I just wanted to add my congratulations to the best wishes to Dale Wilson on his well-deserved retirement. Mark Schlockhead. So that was a very nice letter from our past city manager. He's traveling or he would have been here. Now, it's my turn. Mr. Wilson, come up here, please. First, thank you very much for your service, once again. And we have a nice resolution, and I think you actually get to take this home. Resolution 2018-U, a resolution inducting Dale Wilson to the City of Belbrook Wall of Honor. Whereas the city of Belbrook established the Wall of Honor in order to recognize the outstanding contributions of its citizens and other community members who make the city of Belbrook an exceptional place to live, work, and grow. Whereas this honor is bestowed only to those who have been deemed worthy by mayor and city council of the city of Belbrook. And whereas Mr. Wilson has served the city of Belbrook in various capacities, and most recently as Service Director for a total of 41 years. And whereas Mr. Wilson has worked tirelessly to accomplish a number of projects, large and small, during his tenure, including moderizing the city's water system, managing major street projects, including the expansion of Franklin Street, creating the city's computer network system, and managing various flood prevention projects, all while leading the team and ensuring the seamless operation of the city's water treatment and distribution systems, street maintenance, and facility upkeep. Whereas Mr. Wilson has conscientiously and consciously in the performance of his various duties and helped shape the city into the community that it is today. And whereas the mayor and city council wish to acknowledge Mr. Wilson's dedication to the performance of his duties and responsibilities and all of his endeavors, and recognize Mr. Wilson's many contributions to the local community during his tenure. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves: Section 1, that the mayor and city council of the city of Belbrook hereby commend Mr. Wilson for his devotion to the duty and exemplary, I can't talk right now, exemplary service counsel for itself, the city administration, and citizens of Belbrook, extends its appreciation and very best wishes to Mr. Wilson and his retirement. Section 2, that Mr. Wilson be inducted to the City of Belbrook Wall of Honor and permanently honored for his contributions to the community. Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-U?
I'll move.
May I have a second?
Second.
And roll call.
A motion by Mrs. Middlestutter to adopt Resolution 2018-U, a resolution inducting Dale Wilson to the City of Belbrook Wall of Honor, that was seconded by Mr. Schweller. Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
It passes, Dale. Dale, thank you very much for your service. You've done more for the city than you can imagine. I know you've been here 41 years. We also have a very nice black for Dale. June 18, 1973, to August 3, 2018. So that's a couple of years. So if you'd like, you can say a few words, but I know--
I already know how much I love public speaking, right?
I know, so you don't have to say anything, Dale.
I do want to say thanks to all of you guys. It's really been an honor to work for the city. It's been my life since I can remember. And Belbrook is loaded with great residents and also employees. I don't think the residents realize how lucky they are that everybody here really cares about the community. I've never been in a meeting anywhere that people, you know, making these decisions didn't look out after the people of the community, and I think that's very important. I'd like the residents to know that. I had a very good run, and thanks to the leadership before, now, and Melissa, and Mark, and Babe Hamilton even. And most of all, I don't think I could have done without the crew of the service department. They made my job a lot easier than what it is, because they work hard for me. They've always did a lot of good work for me. And I didn't just work here, I became friends with a lot of people here in all departments. I mean, it's just like family to me, and this is always, I always knew this was going to be one of the hardest days of my life, and I'm lucky I still get to live here. So I wanted to thank everybody here as well.
Thank you very much, Dale. Anything, any other council members like to add anything to that resolution?
I would. I'd just like to thank Dale for his leadership, and all the things in this resolution are really important, making sure that our water is safe to drink and our facilities are kept well, but under your leadership and your team, the most important thing in my mind is in the 24 years that I've lived in Belbrook, through all the snowstorms, there's never been one time where I couldn't get up to West Sudbury Hill to my garage. I owe that to you and your team. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Dale for all your service and the years you've put in. You can tell a good leader by the people that work for him, they all love you. That's, that means something. You've went through the blizzard of '77, '78, all the things that Mother Nature's thrown at you. You came through, and everything's working and has worked, and a lot of times, nobody sees you or even gives you credit, and I apologize for that. Maybe we should have done more of that. But it's been great, Dale, and thank you.
Dale, 14 years ago, I met you on a catch basin that was causing problems, water to seep up into my property, and you effectively resolved it with the people that were in your organization. And I'd like to tell you that I think in those 14 years, the city has been under, well-served with the service department and the people that have helped the citizens, you know, in time of need, and so thank you for that leadership. Thank you for the people that were there and your management of the service.
You know what I'm going to talk about. You do all the heavy mechanical things that you have to deal with. You still take time to help out the garden club in all of the beautification projects that they do around the city, the parts that the women can't quite handle, and you've always been gracious and helpful and make sure that we have the mulch there when we need it, they even bring it to us so we can spread it, and you water the plants that we put in. That's above and beyond just taking care of the, makes Belbrook prettier, and we sincerely appreciate your cooperation, because you've always been great about it. You never gave us any trouble, but thank you.
Dale, you've done a great job as far as providing service to the community, providing leadership to your group. I always wanted you to come to council more often, and Mark would say, "No, no, no," he doesn't really want to. But we would have given you more accolades over the years if you would have come to council, but I just want to say thank you. You've done a great job. Thank you.
Dale, like what Mark said, the service department of any city is what keeps the city running, and that couldn't be said any better. You've done a great job on managing all of the storms we've had, the water department, and at one time, water and service were two different departments, or Rose, I guess, water, two different departments, we've since consolidated them, and I think you've taken us through some tough times. I remember one time we had a snow or salt shortage, and you mapped out the city in a color-coded map, green and red and blue on what streets and what were the streets are going to get plowed, and I thought that was going to be an absolute nightmare. That turned out to be one of the most seamless events or changes we ever made to the city of Belbrook, to be honest with you, and second only to, I think, what we just completed on Upper Hillside. You deserve a lot of credit for that. That was a very seamless event, and we heard none of the feedback so far that I thought we were going to hear all throughout the process, so thanks a lot, great job.
Dale, just once again, thank you very much for all your years of service, and as you know, we all greatly appreciate what you've done for the city over the last 41 years. Thank you. Anyone else on counsel? If not, moving on, Resolution 2018-V. Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook--
Everyone can go if you don't want to stay for the rest.
Yeah, we can pause for a minute.
Yeah, we can take a few seconds. We don't want to make everyone sit through the--
Oh, I think they should all say and see what we do.
Okay, back to Resolution 2018-V. Mr. McGill.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Belbrook Resolution Number 2018-V, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for school security. Whereas the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that the Belbrook Police Department continue its increased presence at schools within the city limits beyond its normal patrol, and whereas the school district agreed to compensate the city for this increased presence, and whereas the agreement will be effective for the 2018, 2019 school year. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves: Section 1, that the city manager is authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District, and Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. My reading of the agreement is something typical to what we've done in the past between the school board and the police department and the city here, and it's listed as an attachment.
Yes, so this agreement is an annual agreement that we provide between the school district, and this will go off to them once approved, and then they will approve and affix their signature to this. This is for four hours every day, and it's just the same slight increase every year, which I think is $250 over the last year, so--
And we have not increased through this contract, technically our presence there. I know we're there probably a lot more than that, but it's the same contract that we've had in the past years.
Yes.
So there's no, other than a very small, small portion additional. Any questions on counsel? Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-V?
Motion to adopt--
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
And roll call.
Motion by Mr. McGill to adopt Resolution 2018-V, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for school security, seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Moving on, Resolution 2018-W. Mrs. Seager-Lawson.
Resolution Number 2018-W, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games. Whereas the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District has requested that the Belbrook Police Department provide police officers in an extra-duty capacity at Belbrook High School home football games, and whereas the school district agreed to compensate the city for this extra duty, and whereas that agreement will be effective for the 2018 home football season, now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves: Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized to execute the attached agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District; Section 2, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And again, this is an agreement that we enter into every year. I don't know if there's any changes.
No, there were no changes.
Any questions on counsel? It's something we do every year. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-W?
I vote that we adopt Resolution Number 2018-W.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
And roll call.
Motion by Mrs. Seager-Lawson to adopt Resolution 2018-W, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Belbrook Sugar Creek Local School District for security at home football games, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-X. Mr. Schweller, I'm going to put you on the spot. I'm going to recuse myself. I believe this is the combination of two lots that I know I didn't directly work on, but did sort of work on through my company, so I will briefly leave the room and let you handle that one.
Will do. Resolution 2018-X, a resolution approving the combination of lots 58 and 59 of the Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 3, Phase 2, into a single lot 58A. Mr. Edwards?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A resolution approving the combination of lots 58 and 59 of Highway, Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 3, Phase 2, into a single lot 58A. Whereas the Ohio Revised Code sets forth the planning board as municipal platting authority, and whereas requests a plat meets the required to the city zoning code and subdivision regulations, and whereas the Belbrook Planning Board has recommended approval of the combination of Lot 58 and 59 of Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 3, Phase 2, into a single lot 58A of the same subdivision, and whereas the city of Belbrook subdivision regulations stipulate that changes to a recorded plat shall be approved by the action of the Belbrook City Council. Now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves: Section 1, that the combination of lots 58 and 59 of the Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 3, Phase 2, into a new single lot 58A is hereby approved for recording purposes. Section 2, that the mayor and clerk of council are authorized to affix their signatures to the revised record plan, and Section 3, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith.
Okay, so this was approved at the June 7 planning board meeting. There was actually, this was the second of two resolutions that have come before council. The other one was in the last meeting, so the minutes from the June 7 planning board meeting were in the last council packet. So this is a lot combination. If you take a look up at the screen, you can see on the left was Lot 58, on the right was Lot 59. The property owner has purchased both lots and was requesting the combination so that they can build one larger home on the two lots. If you take a look in the middle, there were utility easements, and all of the permissions from all of the utilities were granted to vacate those easements, so there are no issues there, and that's kind of what was holding this up, is that we were waiting on the final two approvals or this would have come to the previous council meeting. So all of the utility easements have been vacated, and it's pretty straightforward. So if anybody has any questions, all of the team knows.
The only thing that was brought up in the, was the impact on the property tax, but if they want to build a larger home, I would assume that the taxes would be--
Yeah.
Off set possibly.
Off set by the increased value of the house.
I would agree.
Consistent with what was done before.
Yeah, it's happened one other time before.
Melissa, do we charge any fees when they do this?
No.
No?
No.
They pay for it all, though, don't they? You did all the engineering and all that stuff?
Well, yes, they do all the engineering work and everything, but the approval process and things like that in the hearings, I mean, there's no--
No charge.
No chance for that.
Do they pay for the city engineer to come out and review it and all that, right?
I believe that they paid a bond for that, and they did, you know, spend down on some of that, but there is still money available.
Okay.
So, yes.
Any more discussion? We have a motion regarding Resolution 2018-X.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-X.
And second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Edwards to adopt Resolution 2018-X, a resolution approving the combination of lots 58 and 59 of the Highview Terrace subdivision, Section 3, Phase 2, into a single lot, Lot 58A, seconded by Mrs. Seager-Lawson. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager-Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Middlestutter?
Yes.
Mr. Schweller?
Yes. Looks like Bob been telling him it's time to come back here.
Just for the record, I worked for Vectren. In my prior career at Vectren, I worked in land services and land rights, and I gave some assistance out on some of the easement on this particular project with the Vectren side, so that is why I recuse myself. So moving on, Resolution 2018-Y. Mr. Schweller?
Yes, Mayor. Resolution 2018-Y, a resolution authorizing the city manager to adjust the pay scales of city positions not covered by a collective bargaining agreement. Whereas the city of Belbrook wishes to adjust the pay scales for city positions which are not covered by collective bargaining agreements, and whereas the city reviews wage rates for its employees on annual basis, and whereas the wages of certain employees will fall outside the new pay scales and ranges for certain positions, and the city manager shall have the authority to adjust those specific wages as necessary, including one-time lump sum payments, and whereas the pay scales of elected officials and the city manager will not be adjusted, and whereas the city wishes to incorporate the wage provisions into the general personnel policies of the city, now therefore, the city of Belbrook hereby resolves: Section 1, that the city manager is hereby authorized to adjust the wages for certain positions for the attached pay scales and ranges effective August 1, 2018. Section 2, that the attached pay scales and ranges be approved as presented. Section 3, that the city manager has the authority to adjust the wages of certain employees that fall outside the new pay scales and ranges for positions as necessary, including one-time lump sum payments. And Section 4, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced forthwith. And this is basically passing on wage increases to our non-bargaining unit employees consistent with what we did on the bargaining units, 2.75%, I believe.
Correct. And that was already built into the prior 2018 budget--
Right.
Upon its adoption.
And then maybe just to clarify, lump sum are people who've maxed out their positions and their salary caps, so they can no longer get raises, but they can get lump sum. Any other questions on city council? Something we've done after every bargaining agreement. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-Y?
We would like to move for the adoption of Resolution 2018-Y.
May I have a second?
A second.
End roll call.
Motion by Mr. Schweller to adopt Resolution 2018-Y, a resolution authorizing the city manager to adjust the pay scales of city positions not covered by collective bargaining agreement, seconded by Mrs. Mittelstetter. Mr. Schweller?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
Yes.
Mayor Baird?
Yes. Moving on, city manager report.
Okay. Oh, here it is, okay. It was right in front of me. Okay, um, I don't think that we heard from all of council, but we were trying to schedule the next joint meeting of council, Sugar Creek Township, and the school board for next Monday, if all were available. And I know that we heard from some, but not from all, so is anybody unable to make that meeting, or would like to propose
Should be good, July 16th, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, it should be fine.
Yeah, I'm fine, and then Park District also.
Okay, and it would be at 6:00 PM at the township offices on Monday.
They meet that night too, don't they? So
We typically do it prior to their meeting, so
Mm-hmm.
Less than more than an hour.
I can't because they have to go off at 7:00 for their township meeting.
Okay, and as everybody was aware, tonight Dale Wilson is retiring effective August 3rd, but his last day of employment is the 13th, so this Friday, there's gonna be a retirement luncheon held at Rumors on Saturday, the 14th, from 1:00 to 5:00 for anybody that would like to attend, and I believe I sent an invite to everybody. We will have interviews for the deputy fire chief this Friday for an internal posting of that position. And then I am working on putting together a pilot fall farmer's market on the morning of September 15th here in our municipal parking lot, so I'm working to get vendors, and I'm trying to get more people active in downtown and things like that to build interest in the downtown area and hopefully spur some business. So, I'm gonna try to do this fall farmer's market pilot, and if it is well received, then I'd like to do that on a regular basis next year, so that's it.
Any questions for our city manager this evening?
Melissa, have you talked to any of the business people downtown to get their opinions?
Not on the farmer's market specifically, but I've been very engaged with nearly all the business owners that I can get my hands on, so yes.
Okay.
I hope it's something that will work in the Chamber of Commerce and really want to be involved too, so.
I didn't think it was fair to ask Dale on his retirement day, but the corner of Barrel and Bledsoe, it was originally planned for Barrel to continue on into Sugar Creek Township, but what I understand from the Green County road planning stuff is that all the residents in Sugar Creek Township didn't want it to go through, so now it dead ends. I think we need some signs or something that kind of says, hey, don't drive any further because you run right into basically someone's backyard.
Okay.
So, I don't know if that's something
Is that on the south or north side of the creek?
It's, I just run
Is that where the sidewalk to nowhere is?
No, it's not quite where the sidewalk to nowhere is. It's probably behind the sidewalk to nowhere.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought, got it.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
But we probably need some kind of signage that kind of says, stop driving, you can't go anywhere.
Okay.
Because the road is kind of just dead ends into someone's backyard.
Okay.
And that's probably why the sidewalk's there originally, that was, I think, probably planned.
It was a reflection.
Any other questions for our city manager? Seeing none, we'll move on to committee report service.
No service report.
Safety?
No report, ma'am.
Finance audit?
Only one question for the city managers, what did you update on the Ohio audit?
Well, they have
That keeps creeping along.
They have not been around since the 4th of July holiday that I've saw. I think they were here for one day, and it was just one, so I think they may be finished.
Okay.
So, we'll actually wait to report.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Community affairs?
Just one thing, the Little Miami watershed is doing
Basketball.
Hmm?
The basketball?
The basketball, the hoopla. It's gonna be on Thursday, July 26th at the middle school from 6:00 to 9:00. You can watch current and alumni Belbrook basketball players and students play against local officials to help raise funds for the protection of the Little Miami River. Doors open at 6:00, the event begins at 7:00. Tickets are $5 per person or $20 per family, and food will be available. And are you playing?
No. These are her. No, I'll know a few players. I'm trying to pull my calendar up on some other things, too. They're also on, let's see, this is July, July 21st, they're having the induction of the football, Belbrook Football Hall of Fame. I know a couple of the people. That will be Sugar Valley Golf Club on the 21st. I believe it's cocktails at 6:00. I believe it's $50 a person. I'm not sure, probably Mark Sigmund, Janess Sigmund would be good contacts for that, but that, well, we will not have another meeting before that, and that will be Saturday, the 21st. One other thing coming up for the calendars besides the Lions Club, that week of Lions Club, the Belbrook Sugar Creek Chamber of Commerce golf adding at Sugar Valley, that will be August 16th, and you can contact the chamber, and I believe, once again, I'm running along with a couple other, Mike Blythe and Phil Martin.
And also, the Eagle 5K is on July 21st.
And the Eagle 5K. We have lots of things coming up, so. And so, moving on, old business. Anyone have any old business? New business, we have one issue to discuss this evening, appealing, appeal hearing of village review board decision of 79 West Franklin Street. So, maybe first, give us just a little bit of background. I know internally, we've talked about this a few times.
Okay, so in the packet, I gave a timeline of all of the notable events that have went on with this property. This dates back to the winter of 2015 when the house was approved for demolition, so there was a dilapidated home there, and it was torn down, and a duplex was built in its place. The process in which someone has to go through whenever they want to build anything in the old village is they have to go through the village review board. They present what they are wanting to build to that board, and then they issue a certificate of appropriateness for the structure to ensure that it will fit in with the surrounding structures in that area. So, this was, that was approved by the village review board in February of 2016, and then construction occurred in early 2017. It was discovered that the construction didn't match the plans that were approved, and then there was another meeting in August of 2017 of the VRB to discuss the property, and there was an appeal by the property owner to make some changes, which was ultimately denied. There was a motion made by the VRB to modify the property, and that was, the modifications including installing a gable with a decorative louver, install faux windows on the north side of the property, and then railings on the north and south side of each porch, and there was 120-day timeline given for completion. So, that actually lapsed in December, and then the previous city manager had given an extension, and then there was some zoning violations that were given and a fine of $250 early this year. I had actually met with the property owner and kind of talked about some of this, and so here we are with an appeal. He had written, the property owner had written a letter to council, which was in your packets, but before we get to that, I do want to draw everyone's attention to this. When I met with the property owner who is here, Mr. Gendrian, if you take a look, these were the original plans that were submitted to the village review board, and if you take a look at this, these plans are problematic for a number of reasons. First, if you look at the image to the bottom, there are two north elevations. There's no south on here. Also, if you look at the west and the east elevations, it shows here that there's a gable on the left side of the west and the east. That should actually be mirrored and flipped. So, the architect that drew these plans drew them with a number of issues because they could never be built to spec as shown here. So, I just want to point out that those plans were problematic to begin with. These were filed with the county with the two north elevations. I asked the county to provide me with what was actually filed, and they couldn't find them because they were archived. You'd see the email from Al Kuzma from Green County. I sent him both of these images, the previous one that was just on the screen, as well as this one, to say which one of these were actually filed with the county, and he said, the person that approved them said that both of them were filed. And if you actually look at this second one, again, there are similar issues. If you look at the bottom, you see the one that says north elevation street, and then the second one, which was scratched out by somebody, I'm not sure, it still has a second north elevation. And then if you look at the top, the top two images of the west and the east, it's, they still both have a gable to the left side of the property, which isn't possible as well. So, again, even with the revised plans, there were still problems with the plans, but at the end of the day, the village review board intended for this north elevation street, this bottom-left image, as the one that should be built, even though there were two north elevations. And if you look at what was actually built, it was one of those north elevations. So, I can see how this thing got very confused. I can also understand that, you know, there was a conversation, which the minutes were in the packet, that this revised north elevation that's shown was what the village review board had intended to be built, but there were two north elevations, both were also turned into the county. Nobody kind of caught this thing, and here we are today with a north elevation that looks just like the north elevation that were in the original plans, as well as these revised plans here, the bottom right that's still labeled north, with the exception of the railings. So, I had spoken with Mr. Gendrian, and we had kind of talked about this, and he had pointed out the fact that installing this gable onto the property at this point, cutting into the roof and making that change would be very costly. He did say that, he did commit that if the, if and when, well, when, the roof would need to be replaced, that he would install that at that time because it would make, it would make more sense, but he is requesting a compromise of going ahead and paying the $250 fine, installing these railings on the sides of the porch, which were part of the original direction given by the village review board. And he said he would also add shutters to that north, street-facing side of the property. So, he has offered to pay the fine, install shutters, and then install those railings. So, that is his appeal to council, and then Mr. Gendrian is here, so if he has anything to add, he's more than welcome, but
And then sort of how we got here, that might be good
Oh, yeah.
Review for us to, so
So, in the zoning code, it, the section that talks about the village review board, the village review board makes a decision, and if a property owner wants to appeal that decision, they have 45 days to appeal that decision to council. So, that 45 days has obviously lapsed because that decision was made in 2017 at some point. I think it was the fall of 2017. So, at the last meeting, council decided that they would, you know, grant that appeal even though it was outside of the 45-day window, so here we are. And there really are no stipulations in the zoning code in terms of process, other than council can hear the appeal, they can either decide to uphold the village review board's decision, they could, you know, deny the village review board's decision with some modifications. So, here we are, there is an appeal being made by the property owner to not do everything that the village review board had requested of him, however, he is willing to do some of those things if council approves. So, before you tonight is his appeal to not do the gable and the faux windows, but to add shutters in their place, basically to add some additional elements to that north elevation, do the railings, which was part of the village review board's decision, and then pay the $250 fine.
What was the old village review board's vote on through this process? Were they unanimous all the way through?
That I'm not certain on. I know that I've got
Was it unanimous?
Yes, yes.
It's my understanding that the first original drawing wasn't accepted by the village review board because it didn't look like the other house that was there. I mean, in other words, we were trying to keep the look and feel of the downtown area, and those two houses were identical until we tore down the original house and then built this new house. So, I think my understanding is, is the problem always was, is they wanted it to look similar to other structures next to it.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, if the original drawing was denied, and the second drawing was accepted, it's very clear to almost anybody that there should have been a gable there, right? I mean, even though there is two norths, I get that, that's
Yeah.
And what was
But what was built was the original drawing, which is like, we've already, the village review board said, no, that wasn't acceptable. So, I don't know, I guess it's just concerning that they went ahead and built the original drawing anyway.
And I think in Kuzman's email, he essentially said, obviously he cited codes and all those kinds of things, that we're separate entities and one doesn't affect the other. We're independent of the county and all of that, so.
I think the one thing that ties them together is a certificate of appropriateness. The county won't issue a permit unless they have that, which means they know our zoning approved it with that certificate.
Well, and I think essentially, they said they made it, I mean, you probably got the email, so I think essentially, they said they probably missed it. So, they essentially did give it for, but they have both of them, and they're both approved. So, they sort of did.
Well, they're, you know
But as I said, it has nothing legally binding with the city. It's completely separate issue.
They're looking for structure and code and make sure it doesn't fall in.
Yep.
They're not really going out of their way to look at the
I assume they have two different versions. I mean, I get what they did. They basically built to one of the specs. They had two specs to kind of choose from, and I would like to see them put on a false gable if they could, because I kind of like that idea, I kind of like that look there. But I kind of see we're kind of stuck that we've got something that's approved that's not exactly complete. But the one thing it does upset me about the whole case is this thing has dragged on way too long. And I think we're always been reasonable people, and I'm just disappointed that this has just been out there lingering, and I would like to see this thing wrapped up when we first brought it to his attention.
Yeah, I guess I'm also concerned with this, too, that in proffering the appeal back to council, the owner of the property, Mr. Gendrian, has basically said the gable is preferred when it was integral to the design itself. And as such, as you go through this, I think that that's one of those things that it may have gotten overlooked, but still it was integral. He's the developer, he's the owner of the property, he knows what should have been there, and as such, you know, I believe that should have been placed on and put forth with the building itself. And the other thing that I see is that with this, what's being offered up as a settlement right now is no different than what happened back when the village review board had it earlier in the year when they asked for the same thing, the six-piece, let's see, fencing, the handrails, all four doors with windows and doors and shutters, I mean, so what do we have here? Oris?
I think that the intent was well-known, that the gable be put on that roof. The previous zoning person that we had was very knowledgeable and expressed that gable be there, along with some of the other things that haven't been put on. And it's important that, you know, we have these codes, and both parties agreed to it, city and Mr. Gendrian agreed to it, and so unfortunate it didn't come about. And I believe it still needs, that gable needs to be there. I don't see any excuse why it wouldn't be. I know we can't blame the county and the person responsible sitting here, and it's just not the gable, but through this whole process, I think there was issues with certain things that wanted to be changed, and this and that and the other. And the zoning code gives a lot of And the zoning code gives a lot of direction, it has a lot of leeway. You come to a compromise, and then the builder, between the builder and the zoning, the certificate of appropriateness, that's what they agreed on. And to come up in the end and not comply with that is very unfortunate. And I remember when the city council was designing this ordinance, they put in a lot of work, um, trying to come up with something to preserve the look of the city and have something people could come to. And you can walk from Little Sugar Creek down to Washington Mill and just take a look at all the buildings. And there's a lot of, uh, you see a lot of gables. And I remember in the code, the architect, I remember watching him on that screen right there, showing the lines from the different buildings, the length in the windows, all that stuff's important. And, and on top of that, I don't think the city's really, I mean, we've got a lot of leeway and a lot of, uh, they work it out. It's not, they're not intense on this. And I don't think anybody from the city would micromanage and watch this building process. I mean, once that is, certificate of appro, appropriateness is issued, you know, you just kind of believe that people's going to do the right thing. I mean, I've been through this process several times. It's, it's not hard. Um, we've had other buildings in the city, they've all worked out fine, so. But it's unfortunate, but I think that gable needs to be there.
It just looks like the side of the house is facing the main street, and I don't know what you could do with it, other than put that gable in to make it look like it belongs as a front.
Here's, another point I'd bring out is that, um, well, Mr. Gendrian has stated before in, in the meetings with the VRB that, um, he has built before, so he has some knowledge of the process that goes on with this.
Yeah.
He, he said that he was out and on-site two to three times a week. So if you're, if you, if you understand what goes into the building process, and this is your building, and you've been there two to three times a week, why wasn't it noticed at that point that, that the, the gable was not on there, if you're familiar with your, your, the, the product that you're building on that site? And I, I just think that's a, that's a ma, major faux pas and overlook, you know, that needs to be corrected.
I, I agree with my fellow council members. I think it, it belongs there, it should have been there. Um, I think by not enforcing it being there, that we set a precedent for any other structure or any other building that we deal in the city. People just build whatever they want to build, and that's not what we want.
Uh, Mr. Gendrian, if you want to come up, um, and have any, anything you'd like to say? I think they, they have the minutes from all the meetings and the, the thing going on for a while.
Right. Well, first of all, thanks for allowing me to be here tonight. Um, just listening to the comments, it sounds like I'm going to be outvoted. I don't know, I'll have to wait and see how the vote turns out, but, uh, I... It's, it is unfortunate that I didn't pay more attention to, uh, the building as it was going up. My main focus was on the interior rather than the exterior. And somehow the fact that, uh, the outside didn't turn out is, uh, I guess we depicted in the drawings, um, it just slipped by, it was one of those things. Uh, it, it should have been there, I should have paid more attention. I, I take responsibility for the fact that it, it didn't happen. On the other hand, to put up a gable runs into some money, several thousand dollars, and, um, I just don't feel I have the money to spend right now, you know, on that gable. Uh, the other items, um, won't be too expensive, probably a couple thousand bucks, I'm just guessing, but, uh, the gable's going to be much more expensive, and it's going to kind of tear apart the roof. And there's always a possibility that the roof will leak afterwards, and I'll forever having a roofer out there trying to patch it up. It just makes more sense, it seems more practical to put the gable up when I have to replace the roof. Now, that sounds very indefinite, but it, it will happen at some point in time. That roof will have to be replaced. I mean, if it runs its natural life, it'd probably be 15, 20 years. But on the other hand, uh, you know, if we have a, a storm, a strong wind, uh, that rips off a bunch of shingles, and I have to replace the roof then, or if we get another terrific hailstorm, we've had in the last 15 years or so, we've had in this area, Centerville, Bellbrook, a couple bad hailstorms, which resulted in roofs having to be replaced. So it may not be that far away, but in my opinion, uh, that would be the time to replace the gable. That's, that's what I would like to do, rather than try to do it right now. The other, other things are not that, um, difficult, and could be done in a reasonably short period of time. I have someone lined up to put the railings on and the shutters, and he happens to be on vacation right at this point in time, but should be back about the middle of the month. And hopefully we could get going on it shortly thereafter. Now, to put a gable on, um, that's a little more difficult. You have to get estimates, you have to line up somebody that you feel comfortable working with. I went through all this last fall. Um, I tried to find somebody. I thought when I, we were at the meeting last, uh, August, that my builder would be around, and I called him when I got home, and he had to be out of town, and says, yeah, I'll be back, uh, in a couple of weeks. Well, we played telephone tag for a while, and it turns out he moved to Texas. Now, had he stayed here, I knew he was going to move to Texas, I just didn't think that soon. I mean, he had talked, he had family there and some other business interests, and I knew eventually he was probably going to move to Texas. I didn't think it'd be in the fall of 2017. So, uh, had he been around, he was familiar with the property, and, uh, we had talked about it a little bit, the fact that the gable didn't go on, and, uh, I think, you know, if I had been able to get him to do it, it'd been a lot less expensive. He talked about me paying for the materials, and he would supply the labor. Of course, someone else, um, I have to pay the full boat. So I would appreciate it if you would approve the other things and defer the obligation to put the gable on at this time. I don't, I don't know what else I can add in the way of background. I think you have a lot of documents. I don't want to cry on anyone's shoulder about the fact that the builder moved, and it'd been certainly a lot more convenient that if he was still here, and if he wasn't cooperative, I'd have been in a position to, um, bring some legal action against him, but that's pretty hard with him in Texas, and, you know, I wouldn't be spinning my wheels trying to do anything like that, so. I can only apologize for the fact that it didn't go on. Um, I would appreciate your help in this matter and trying to, you know, reach, reach, reach an agreement, and maybe we could get this thing behind us, and... Thank you, City Manager, for helping me out in the nice conversation we had, uh, I don't know how long ago it was, three, four weeks ago, something like that, but... That's about all I had to say without, I'm not a great public speaker, so that's why I had-
Probably did better than I did earlier.
Hope, maybe, um, my attorney would, would have, would have been here, but he's out of town. He could put things a lot more succinctly than, than I'm able to do. I tend to ram a lot after a certain point, so...
Yeah, and I think him and I have a few things in common.
Yeah. Thank you for your consideration and forbearance in this matter.
Um, so I guess I need to-
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I don't understand why putting the gable on now would be any different than putting it on when you re-roof the, have to re-roof it, because you would still be cutting into the roof and still facing the same issues of possible leak or whatever. There wouldn't be anything different at that point than now, other than that you're tearing off good shingles now, and you'd be tearing off-
Yeah, well, I have to buy, I have to buy more shingles, and you're, you're tearing into the integrity of the roof.
You would be anyway, at either time.
Well, yes, but you have to put a new roof on there, and you, you know, you might as well do it at that time, and...
You're putting your shingles on, not a new...
Well, a new roof shingles. I mean, possi, you know, there's a good possibility-
Big difference.
...the insurance company might pay for part of that also, you know, the re-roof, so. Otherwise-
You still have to tear into the roof structure, and when you're reshingling, unless you're putting new, um, the, the-
The valleys?
No, not the valleys, the, if, if you're, if the boards underneath that you're putting the shingles on are bad, you have to replace those. But you're not tearing into the superstructure of the roof design when you, when you reshingle. So you're facing the same issues then as you would be now. It's just that now, everything's new.
Right.
This is a false gable, right?
It's a false gable, so...
So there's no, it's not going through the roof anyway?
No, it's just on top.
It's just sitting on top of it, so I guess-
It just sits on top. It's a fake, it's a fake gable.
So, um, why would you have any integrity issues with the roof or the sheathing underneath if you're just putting a fake, a false gable on the front, on, on that house? I don't-
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure where the leakage would come. You'd put it up and you'd shingle around, I mean, I'm not a builder, but...
Right, and I'm not a contractor either.
Or attaches to the back, you're going to have to, you'll have to, I assume they'd probably leave the, the plywood or the whatever fiber boards underneath there, and-
Just attach to that.
Yeah, and then-
And then you shingle over it, down the valley, and anything else.
Well, you got to do the sides, but, yeah. I'm no building expert either, so...
I mean, it'd be one thing if you're cutting into the roof and making it an actual gable, that you have to drywall and everything inside it, but that's not happening. It's just sitting right on top of it.
It's decorative only.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions for council? Um, I guess I'm also trying to figure out the logistics of this, on how I should present this. Um, there's a couple options. At our last meeting, we voted to hear the appeal, where we could have just voted and not hear, heard the appeal, and it would have been over. Um, so I'm trying to think in my head how to make this a motion. Um, there's a couple ways. I guess one would be-
To deny the appeal.
Deny the appeal. The other one would be to, um, grant the appeal based upon the recommendations of, we'd have to probably listen to the TV to be clear on what it was, essentially, all the things listed out, and some of the prior thing other than the gable. Um, and I think they're one and the same. Uh, so I guess I'd make a motion first, then, to accept the appeal with the modifications as laid out, and other than not completing the gable, and those details would have to be porked out. So that would be, um, the motion, I believe. Does everyone agree with that? Does that make sense?
No.
No.
Well-
It makes sense, it's a motion, and you can accept it or deny it.
Yeah, you can accept or deny.
Right.
So you're going to say yes or no?
Yeah. We're going to force a proposal to fix the railings, to put in the, the windows and the shutters, or false windows and shutters.
Correct.
And then to defer the re, the build of the gable until it's such time that you do other significant roof work.
No, not, not the false windows and shut, just the shutters.
The shutters is what he proposed.
He's not doing the false windows either.
So, but that's the proposals I'm saying he has proposed.
So just the shutters and the railings, and then defer the roof.
Right, right, and that should be the motion.
Yeah, the motion will be his proposal, which are the shutters, um, not the gable, um, and-
And the railings.
And the railings.
And pay his-
So that is the motion for us to either accept or reject.
Right.
So that would be the first motion.
That's correct.
So I, will someone make that motion?
So...
So if you vote no, then it's rejected.
Okay.
Okay.
I wanted to understand how, it's one of those.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Gendrian's-
Proposal, which are-
Which are put in the shutters, put in the railings, and defer the gable until later.
And pay the fine.
And pay the fine.
And pay the two fifty. May I have a second?
Second.
And then roll call.
Okay, I want to make sure that the motion is to accept-
Mr. Gendrian?
To accept the appeal.
Can I vote no on the motion?
Yeah, yes, you can. Paul's-
You've got to make me the proverbial-
Mr. Gendrian's proposal. So we're, we're voting-
To accept the proposal of-
Yes.
The Village Review Board decision on 79 West Franklin.
Yeah.
And it's, with the modifications of-
Pay the fine, install the railings, install the shutters, defer the gable.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, which, and depending on how it goes, you know, so anyway, so that's the motion. Yeah, it'll be either yes or no, to accept it.
Yes.
So that's the motion, so roll call.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Seager Lawson to, to accept the modification of Mr. Gendrian's property at 79 West Franklin Street, and it includes pay the 250 fine, install railings on the north and south side of the porch, install shutters on the north side of the property, and defer the gable. And that was seconded by Mr. Greenwood. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Mrs. Seager Lawson?
No.
Mr. Greenwood?
No.
Mr. Edwards?
No.
Mr. McGill?
No.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
No.
Mr. Schreller?
Change a little bit and say yes.
Mayor Baird?
I don't know if it matters, but, you know, it's one of the things that-
It doesn't, yeah.
We got two, you know, the mistake was made when the drawings were incorrect and approved that way. And I think that's, that's what we got to deal with, but it's still much better than what it was before.
Yeah, and I, yes. Um, so I'm going to say no, on the fence, no. Um, my, my opinion of it is the building looks a heck of a lot better. I'm concerned about the precedent it sends, that in the future this could happen again. And if we, you know, would accept the changes now, the gable is going to be expensive, but since it's a false gable, I'm hoping it, it's not going to be $10,000. It'd be $3,000, whatever, I don't know.
Is there a timeframe, though, when we can-
Well, that, we're, what we will do is then, we'll have a motion to, I guess, reject the appeal, and we'll go back in the process, whatever the, whatever the process is.
Yeah, it would basically be, um, through zoning code violations, because it would still stand as a violation at this point, until it's corrected.
Correct. Yeah. So, um, so then I, then I guess we would need a motion to reject the appeal at this point? I'm not sure on that.
Um...
We rejected his proposal, and we heard, we had an appeal.
Yeah.
To reject, to reject it and send it back to, send it back to the board?
BZA, or not BZA, Old Village.
Well, I don't think they're, they're done with it. They're done. Yeah, now it's a staff issue.
It's a staff issue now.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, a motion to, the motion would be to reject the appeal.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to reject the appeal.
May I have a second?
Second.
And a roll call.
A motion by Mr. Edwards to reject the appeal, um, of 79 West Franklin Street, and that was seconded by Mr. McGill. Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. McGill?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mrs. Mittelstetter?
Yes.
Mr. Schreller?
No.
Mayor Baird?
Yes.
I didn't get the vote, yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Seager Lawson.
Yes.
So, you want to know, yes.
Mr. Gendrian, thank you very much for coming this evening. Um, I know it probably didn't turn out how you wanted. I know you've been through a lot of these. I know our Old Village Review Board has to. It's one of those difficult situations. The building looks better, but it's something that I think, apparently, a majority of council would like to see, so... Um, with that, we will move on, open discussion on down the line.
I don't have anything to add, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor. Nothing, yeah.
Nothing. Nothing.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
I think I already said my stuff is open to the public. You have five minutes for open discussion. Um, you need to say your name and address, even though we know it.
My name's Jeff Owens, 120, uh, North Main Street, or Stephen Bell House, as most people in town know it. I want to thank you for backing up the Village Review Board. You know, when this was presented, I was, it just happened, I was here at the meeting because we just bought the house, and we had some questions. And I know Mr. Harding quizzed him very hard on what it was going to be, period. There was no, you know, it was exactly that, it was just odd I was here. A year later, when he came back, I was on the committee. And, you know, we forgave several items on there. We let him not change the doors, not do all the railings, we really already forgave him on a lot of items. So, you know, that, you know, I walked the dots most, a lot of times, and that house is just ugly, you know, and just on a personal note, you know, I own a real estate company, so I get to get out in a lot of places, and we have one of the least restrictive downtown areas, period. I was amazed because we needed to, at some point, do a handicap ramp for my son, he's in a wheelchair, and that's why we were here originally, and I couldn't believe how easy the village was. So as easy as the village is, yeah, it would have been a shame not to enforce the simple things that he agreed to originally. He agreed to the second time, he said he would get on it as soon as he got done with being in Florida for the winter, so now we're almost a year later, so I just want to, I want to thank you for backing up the group that I'm on.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for coming out.
Yeah, thanks for sitting through, you sort of picked a long meeting at the end of the agenda. Well, it was our first one, and you probably had to flip the paper, because Mr. Gendrian didn't see it either.
Looks like he's been through a lot of long meetings, though.
Yeah, I'm sure he has, so... So does any other member on council have any other business coming before us this evening? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.